We're live on Zoom and TV 30 will count you in.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to this, the July 24th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I called the meeting to order. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Entos. Councilmember Branning.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kick.
Here.
Mayor Marshawn.
Here. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Question for the city attorney. Was there any reportable action taken in closed session?
Mr. Mayor, this is Jason Alcala, your city attorney. No, the council did not take any reportable action in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go into the open forum, this has been a really rough week. And I would like to acknowledge that the Livermore wine industry has lost one of our giants. Mitchell Katz sadly passed away over the weekend. So I would ask that we honor Mr. Katz and the family by observing a moment of silence. Make a wall as we send condolences to the Katz family and to the industry they supported. With that, I'll ask the city clerk as we go into the open forum to describe how participants can take, can participate in the, in the action.
The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. Agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address a speaker's comments when a council member believes it's relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate in person or remotely as noticed on the agenda. To provide comment in person, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance to the council chambers. Speakers will be announced in the order received. We will hear from speakers of, of the public who are in person first, followed by those wishing to speak on Zoom. To provide comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand at the beginning of each item. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will be begin at the lectern or upon being unmuted. And the mayor, sorry, the mayor will announce a conclusion of public comment period after comments have been voiced in the record.
Okay, very good. Would you please call the names, the cards that you have?
The first speaker is David McWigan, followed by Greg Scott, followed by Alexander Pepper.
Okay, Johnny, you want people to believe you've only acted in the best interests of Livermore. Here's a few questions that need to be answered. I know you weren't required to answer any questions, but if you want to, you can just speak up. Okay, first question. When a woman came in and complained that Officer Black had sex with her when she was under the influence, how was it in the best interests of Livermore to lie and cover it up? Any answer? Yeah, that's a tough one. Okay, let's try again. When another woman came in and complained that when she and Officer Black had sex, he filmed the encounter without her permission. How is it in the best interests of Livermore to lie and cover it up? Again, any answer? Yeah, that was a tough one as well. Okay, one last one. When Officer Black was arrested for using his position as a Livermore police officer to sexually exploit a teenage girl, how was it in the best instance of Livermore to actually help us actively help his defense? One more time, any answer? Yeah, we know many of the things you've done, Johnny. But what we don't know is summed up by the question and ask you, an actor might ask of the director, what's the motivation? Why did you go so far out of your way to help us put, help a sexual predator? I can only think of two people who actually benefited from your helping Officer Black's legal defense. There's Officer Black, of course. The only other person I could think of directly benefit is Mr. Kella because he avoided being known as the city attorney who failed to protect his city from keeping a sexual predator in a police uniform. But what was a benefit to the people of uniform or people of Livermore? You're a lying corrupt criminal, Johnny, and you will be found out.
The next speaker is Greg Scott, followed by Alexander Pepper, followed by Mike Godfrey.
Mr. Mayor, City of Livermore, City Council, City of Livermore staff, audience, I'm Greg Scott. Councilman Barriantos, I want to thank you for your apology last meeting. I, I think it was necessary. I'm saddened by the fact that the mayor didn't grant you the permission to give your apology at the start of the meeting. It was very courageous and humbling of you to do that. This last week, I was traveling westbound on Blue Bell in Springtown and I saw homeless Cindy. I was quite disappointed in that. I was told by a reliable source that homeless Cindy was housed. What are we going to do about homeless Cindy? And she's been how, she's been homeless here for years. The solution is what? Death like homeless solidad who was reportedly found face down in the Arroyo? It's, it's, we're just not on the track. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned it matters with consideration, the last meeting about goodness village. For the residents of goodness village, it's great. How is goodness village spending their latest million dollar grant? How much is being spent per resident in goodness village? What is the burn rate? Why don't we have some open accounting books on goodness village? From the beginning, from when I sat in a city council meeting here, when it was approved $115,000 per tiny home to now and how they're spending the million dollar grant? You know, it seems to the powerful that the desperately powerless are, a few of them are important when we inject all kinds of money. But what about those outside the castle walls? What do we care? Can you rattle off the names of the dead homeless, the numbers? It, it's just the approach is insane. I'm really disappointed by this. Thank you, Councilman Barriantos, for trying to delay the motion on the Livermore Airport development and lease agreement. I'm, I'm curious about the PFAS and, and the forever chemicals. I'd like to review the chain of custody documents on those chemicals, when they were received, how much were they received? When they were removed from the property, how much are they removed from the property? And is there any contamination there of the thousands of PFAS that are tested for? They're only tested for 32 types. It's a fraction of 1%. And why, why is whatever is important in this agreement more important than the health of the community and the wellbeing of community citizens? It's not right.
The next speaker is Alexander Pepper, followed by Mike Godfrey, followed by Mike Blau.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, to members of the city council and staff. My name is Alexander Pepper and I will be a senior at Granada High School this coming year. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Livermore Youth Climate Summit and explain its goals in relation to Livermore's current climate commitments. The Livermore Youth Climate Summit is a one day interactive event for high school youth to gather and take action on climate change. The summit will be held September 9th at Robert Livermore Community Center. We appreciate the partnership of the city of Livermore as well as the associated organizations of the LA RPD and the Livermore School District. The summit will bring together 150 to 200 youth who want to make a difference. During the summit, we will hear from Bay Area leaders and experts in order to develop action plans. The goals of our youth summit are to learn, spread awareness, take meaningful action and participate in achieving Livermore's climate action goals. We have received amazing help from local organizations such as the Tri Valley Air Quality Climate Alliance as well as Quest Science Center, which is providing much of the adult advisory for our project. I want to emphasize that this is a youth led project. As we approach adulthood and look forward to the future, we can see the problems that we will be confronting. And increasingly, we must take on responsibilities in our community, taking initiatives like this one. While daunting initiatives like the Youth Climate Summit have given us a chance to not only tackle issues like climate change, but show our ability to organize and work with the city and the wider community. For myself and others, Livermore's partnership has shown that the city is willing to take steps to give students a voice. We are excited that Livermore is taking steps now to deal with these new global climate problems as a community. As documented in the Livermore Climate Action Plan. We expect the outcomes of the summit will continue to demonstrate our commitment to helping the city achieve its climate action goals. LYCS invites the city council and our mayor to attend the summit so that you may participate in discussions and hear our hopes for the future of this community. With the support of this council, we can create new dialogue in public forums to continue to make Livermore a better, greener, more climate conscious place with further unity within our city. Thank you for your support and I yield my time.
The next speaker is Mike Godfrey, followed by Mike Blau, followed by Carol Silva.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and council members. As you know, I'm a Realtor and I represent the Bay East Association of Realtors as the chair of our local government committees and our political action committees as well. And of late, we've had some meetings with some of you. We've been to the council meetings. We have recognized there is an issue. And so I, I wanted to figure out what I might be able to do using our own tools at Bay East. And one of those tools is our multiple listing service. When any Realtor wants to get information about anything happening in Livermore in regards to houses that are on the market, they go into the MLS, they put in their code and immediately a message will pop up. And a lot of times those messages are new changes to the MLS, this and that. But I ask our staff people at Bay East to craft a message so that anyone that is going to look in the MLS, that they read this and, and I'm going to read it. So starting on July 1st, all temporary signs, including real estate, open house signs are not allowed in the public right of way, including sidewalks. If you or your agents are holding open house in Livermore, please do not place open house signs on sidewalks. Bay East is working with the city of Livermore to end this ban as soon as possible. In the meantime, please comply with the current sign ordinance. We, we want to be good citizens of, of the city. We want to comply with the law and so we are encouraging our members to do so as well. We don't have any enforcement ability, but we do have education. So we're trying to educate our members to follow the law. We're going to try to work through this solution over a period of time. And we felt that was the best course of action. So educating our members as to the right thing to do is what we're trying to do. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Mike Blau, followed by Carol Silva. And then on Zoom, Jai Kalu.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Mike Blau and I am an owner of a partnership that owns Vasco Plaza in North Livermore Shopping Center. And may I hand this out to each one of the members of the council? And my purpose here today is to ask the city to consider a dedication of, of land that was created when we created not only Vasco Plaza, but a housing development of 28 lots right behind just to the west of Vasco Plaza. And when we created that, that housing tract, the city required us in, in our conditions of approval to donate to the city land, three quarters of an acre for a fire station. And so what happened was in order to accommodate that, we had to jog the road because of the size of the fire, fire station. And it created a small parcel of land on the other side of Jayhawk Lane that was made part of our shopping center. And I've tried over the years to get this resolved and I have not been successful and the staff, when staff changes and, and et cetera. And so what I did is I, we got about a year ago, we got a non-compliance or some type of a document from the neighborhood preservation people. And they told us that we had to clean up this site. And I said, well, I don't even, I don't even own it. And they said, well, we think you do. And I said, well, like seven years ago, someone from the city told me that, that they would accept my dedication. And then I stopped receiving the tax bill. So if you look on the second page that I gave you, the tax bill is, is the, the taxes that we paid on that, on this small little parcel for, for, for those years. And I thought the problem was resolved, but it, it isn't. And so then I just recently called the, the neighborhood preservation people. And I, I said, well, what, what should I do? And they said, well, we would recommend that you go to the city council, talk to them, and then they can give us direction. And the only thing I can tell you is, is that it's clear to me that number one, this parcel is on the west side of the Oh, am I done?
If you could, Paul Spence, if you give him your contact information, I think perhaps he could help you.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming today. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
The next speaker is Carol Silva, then on Zoom, Jai Kalu and Donna Kabine.
Hi, I'm Carol Silva. Good evening, Mayor and city council members and city staff. I'm a Livermore resident. I had technical difficulties with my microphone when I wanted to speak about the airport leasing and development policy at July 10th meeting. What I, one of the things I wanted to say is that Livermore's community is made up of intelligent people. Yet it seems like when the public seeks improvements or opposes certain actions, actions that were recommended by Livermore city staff. And then those recommend, recommendations are usually approved by the majority of the city council. The city council majority doesn't take into consideration the comments that have been made by the public. Why can't the city council pause and spend time to think about public comments made by our community? Some members of the public, such as Donna Kabam and Felicia Zeomec, do a lot of research, checking with subject matter experts and other parties involved before they submit their public comments. The council might listen to public comments, but does the council really consider these comments? Pleasanton City Council publicly thanked a Livermore resident for informing them about the contents in the airport leasing and development policy. I cannot recall a Livermore city council member publicly thanking a public speaker for suggesting improvements to an agenda item. Why should it be so hard for Livermore City Council and the city staff to work with informed Livermore residents to improve the community for all? Thank you.
The next speaker is on Zoom. Jai Kalu, followed by Donna Kabam, followed by Acacia Triplett. Jai Kalu, please unmute yourself.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jay Kalu and I'm a rising sophomore at UCLA, majoring in political science and minoring in data science. I've lived in this district my whole life and I'm here as a concerned constituent to express my opinions on the leasing and development policy adopted by the Livermore Municipal Airport. Though I appreciate the incorporation of public comments and crafting the policy, I believe that future policy should make a greater commitment to combating air, water and noise pollution by solidifying a timeline, switch to unleaded fuel and more strictly enforcing the noise reduction efforts. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Donna Kabam, followed by Acacia Triplett. Donna Kabam, please unmute yourself.
Evening. It is time for the city council to hire an independent outside medical organization to test the blood of children living within one and a half miles of the Livermore Airport. If it's found that children living near the airport have lead levels above normal, then the city must take immediate action. In the meantime, the city should require fixed based operators to start selling unleaded aviation fuel as an option. A study of lead poisoning surrounding San Jose's Reed Hillview Airport was released in 2021. Livermore Airport operations and lead fuel sales are comparable to Reed Hillview. Both airports have flight schools that land, take off and circle the airports. The Reed Hillview study concluded the risk of elevated blood lead levels depended on the direction of prevailing winds and the child's residential district, distance from the airport. The CDC states no safe blood level in children has been identified, even low levels of lead in blood affect IQ, ability to pay attention and academic achievement. One family living approximately 0.82 miles from the Livermore Airport heard the Reed Hillview Airport study and were worried. They had their child's blood tested last week. Their child's blood tested positive from lead. They had already replaced all of their faucets and their child only drinks filtered water. It is therefore unlikely that lead containing water is the source of this troubling news. There are too many children living in neighborhoods within one and a half miles of the Livermore Airport to trivialize, minimize or ignore this issue. Current or planned residential areas within one and a half miles of the airport include the Sage and Montage neighborhoods and the Isabel neighborhood specific plan locations. All are downwind of the airport. This area also includes the De Nova Homes and New Preschool on North Canyon's Parkway and Rod Ranchel, Las Bacitas Elementary and New Horizons on Jack London Boulevard. If the city doesn't immediately require FBOs to sell unleaded aviation fuel, then the city needs to perform blood level, sorry, blood, lead level tests on children living within one half, one and a half miles of the airport. For the health of our children, do something, act now. Thank you.
The last speaker is Acacia Triplett. Acacia Triplett, please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Acacia Triplett and I am currently a rising sophomore at George Washington University, majoring in both political science and psychology. I've also been a, I've lived in this district for a very long time and the issues within Livermore are very important to me. And I'm here today to stress and support the staff recommendation for the city council to adopt a resolution for an agreement with the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District and Horizon's Family Counseling to provide mental health. I think mental health in, in schools is very important and should be a top priority for Livermore. And just to really think about our youth. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. Actually, that was an item on the, on the consent calendar, but, but Ms. Triplett will take that. You don't need to come back. A couple of things I want to just bring up here just briefly. I know that we do not, do not have to speak to things that are on the, they're brought up during the citizens or the open forum. One of the speakers asked why we don't comment on things that are brought up during the open forum. And very simply, we're prohibited by, by state law. That the, the Brown Act does not allow us to discuss things that are not on the agenda. So if something is brought up during the open forum, we can bring it back, but it's, we have to bring it back during the, during the, the matters initiated at the end of the meeting. So that's why we can't discuss this because the Brown Act prohibits us from doing that. But we can bring it back later for discussion, providing there is consensus on the council to do that. Mr. Mr. Scott, I would like to ask you if you would be willing to contact my office. I would like to meet with you. This is very, very difficult addressing the homeless. We have, you've mentioned a person that we have put in housing on several occasions. But because of a number of, of issues, what was absolutely tragic was that this person had an apartment, but they could only sleep outside. So even though they had an apartment, they slept outside. So it took us a great deal of effort and I have to, to give kudos to our human services staff for working so hard with this individual, working for well over a year to ensure that they felt safe in their home. But there are a variety of issues that, that make this a very complicated issue. As you pointed out, we have had people that were homeless die on the streets of Livermore. And that is a real tragedy. What I think is even a greater tragedy is that they have family here and that the family cannot help them to get off of the streets and to underscore the difficulty that if a family can't help them, the chances of municipal bureaucracy are also significantly less likely to help. So these are very, very difficult issues to, to grapple with and we will continue to grapple with them. But what I want to hear from you is I see your letters to the editor and I see your comments here at the podium. And every single thing that the city tries to do, you say is not going to work. It's a waste of time. It's a waste of money. Vineyard 2.0 is a, as you have said, you believe it's a waste of time and a waste of money. I would like to hear from you during our meeting, what you believe will work. Because we're trying a lot of different things. I maintain that there is no silver bullet for homelessness, but we're working on a series of strategies that I call silver buckshot. So we're trying a lot of different things. So please contact my office if you would. And I would like to meet with you and talk with you about what strategies you believe will work. Because we've been working very, very hard on this for a number of years and we're, some of these strategies are working very, very well, but I would like to hear what you believe from your personal experience will work the best. So thank you and thank you for accommodating my comments as well. We're going to go into the consent calendar. These are items that are on the, that are fairly rude. uh, that are fairly routine in nature. Uh, I do have a couple of questions uh, on a couple of these. Does anybody else have an item they wish to pull for consent for discussion? Okay, um, all right. Uh, oh, did you want to pull one?
Three, uh, five point three.
Five point three, okay. Let's pull. Uh, okay, five point three is the uh, uh, business license settlement, and that's for the uh, environmental impact report for the East Greenville study. Okay, um, we can pull that for discussion. I think we'll go and pull each one for discussion, because we'll need to do some uh, additional work on, uh, working on the approval for, or uh, disapproval of that. So five point three, you wanted to pull that for discussion?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Several meetings ago, I, I did oppose the direction we're taking with this. It's to me, it's kind of violate the urban uh, boundary. And I think it's uh, I don't know how many meetings ago, I did come up and it was I said, you pay me, I know they're gonna come back, they're gonna come back and say, well, yeah, we should develop here. And the whole idea is going up through that, the canal. And uh, and I, I just uh, I've read some of the discussion that was taking, taking, and it says the city limits and this urban city growth, they call UGB. And uh, we're just studying that, and I think it's gonna, I think we should be going to the people first before we, we say, okay, we're gonna spend three hundred thousand dollars on a study on, on it, because I think that opens the gates to more development beyond the, the, the boundary. And that's my uh, as is occurring to this, one of the discussions was the justice of the UGB can only accomplish through a vote of the Livermore residents, and that's what my thing was about when I opposed it the first time, that you should go to the people first, say, okay, you know, do you agree that we should expand? And I, I'm not sure. They might say yes. They might, and that'd be fine for us. And I'll go with what the people want to do. But I, to me, it's like trying to sneak a way around their idea and say, look, we got candy and cookies and everything. Go for this, and they, they might decide, okay, well, go against uh, what we wished a long time ago and allow expansion of the city. And it might, we might find out that the citizens like it, because it might encourage more growth and uh, development of industry there, but does that, is that what the city wants? Is it, you know, the public, general public? And that's my concern about uh, five point three.
Okay, I think one of the, I, you bring up some excellent points. But the reason that we're doing this uh, this study is to identify exactly the things that you're talking about, is what would be the benefits to the community? Uh, would there be additional open space? Would there be additional agriculture? Would there be uh, more sustainable opportunities to expand uh, those agricultural lands? Partnering with the Tri Valley Conservancy. So this study is to identify what benefits and what costs there would be to give the opportunity, to give the voters the opportunity to make an informed decision. Right now, they don't have the information. They don't know what the uh, the cost or the benefits would be, what the amount of acreage would be able to be uh, sustained in agriculture, for example, if some uh, industry was allowed. Uh, and then what the contribution of those industries would be to support uh, ag and open space lands. So that's why the study has been requested by the General Plan Advisory Committee to see what benefits would be available, um, to see if voters would want to do that, to see if there is a benefit. So it's really to give the voters the additional information that they would need. Uh, because as it stands right now, the voters don't have that information. And I agree, this is a decision for the voters, and as it says in the uh, staff report, uh, residential uses such as uh, industrial, commercial, parks, open space, and agriculture. Uh, and it's to facilitate non-residential land use types. So it really is uh, keeping uh, those tenants to, we, we're not going to allow residential development out here. But what, what are the advantages? What are the possibilities for the additional open space, parks, and agriculture? So the study, as I see it, is to, exactly as you pointed out, to give the voters the information that they need to make an informed and wise decision.
All right. Well, you know, you got good points here, but I, I'm doing this just to get their antennas up. Okay, that's why I'm doing this.
Okay, it was the, the point of this is to give the voters the information that, that you think, you, you believe that they need. Uh, and that's, that's how we get there. It's, is to do the study, to get the information, and then give the voters that information, because if they don't have that, they can't make an informed choice.
Well, I, I agree with you, but uh, I think the more we talk about it, the more people say, oh, they wake up to what's going on, what might come. They might like the whole idea. I don't know.
That's why we need the information.
That's why we want to talk about it more.
Well, and now this is the way, this is how we get the, the information to talk about it. Uh, Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Mayor. I, I think uh, to have a more informed just to vote on this, the public needs an EIR to understand that. And I guess I oppose your description that we're sneaking around on this. This is very public. Everything we're doing is in the public, and we're not sneaking around anything. So I, I don't understand why you characterized this process as sneaking around.
There we go. Is there any public comment on uh, the consent calendar?
Honorable Mayor, yes, there is. The first speaker is Greg Scott, followed by Pat O'Brien, followed by Carol Silva. Can we clarify, since we pulled it, are we taking comment on?
Take comment on the entire consent calendar.
Okay, thank you.
I am Greg Scott. It, it's obvious what you're doing here. You want to blow through the eastern urban services boundary. You want to extend the city limits. Why else would you be spending three hundred and some odd thousand dollars to do this? I'm reading from the staff report from Brandon Caldwell. Quote, the three hundred and seven thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars will be funded through a portion of the nine point one million one-time payment for past due business license taxes from Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory, LLNL, and Sandia National Laboratories, unquote. So indirectly, you want to blow through the eastern urban services boundary and extend the city limits via federal funds. Again, from the study, which my, my favorite sentence here. Quote, the balance of the one-time business license tax payment not required to cover admin tax payment not required to cover administrative and discovery expenses related to one-time payment will be used to prepay the city's unfunded other post-employment benefits, OPEB, as directed by city council as part of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget update, unquote. I'd like to know what the other post-employment benefits are. I try to figure out all these benefits here through wwwtransparencycalifornia.com, and it, it's amazing to me. Um, I think maybe the other post-employment benefits is when the maximum is hit on the CalPERS, and then what the city has to contribute past that, but I don't know. I, I don't get this. Um, it just seems obvious to me. You want to expand infrastructure. You're having, as five point one shows, and climate change is showing that you're having very, a lot of difficulty with the current infrastructure, and you want to just build more infrastructure. It'd be interesting if you coordinated with the net, the lab of what's going on as far as the climate change, like the earth exascale um, energy system model, you know, what kind of, how what do you think's coming down the pike here, and you're going to expand infrastructure? Good luck.
The next speaker is Pat O'Brien, followed by Carol Silva, followed by Doug Mann on Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor Rocha, members of the council. I'm here tonight representing Tri Valley Reach along with our chairperson Kay King. I'll make this very brief. I just want to express our amazing thanks and gratitude to all of you and to the staff, particularly Fran Reisner, for some great work that's going to allow us to provide some more housing for people of the community we serve, which is it folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Anyhow, thank you so much, and it's been thirty good years working with this council. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker speaking to item five point three is Carol Silva, followed by Doug Mann on Zoom, and then Donna Caban.
Hello again. Um, I'm speaking on agenda item five point three, which relates to awarding an agreement with Ringcon Associates for an environmental assessment of eleven hundred forty acres east of Greenville Road, mostly south of I five eighty and mostly west of the Aqueduct. What are the actual boundaries of the EIR? Um, there were three parcels in the previous closed session, which the city was considering buying. These parcels, um, I think one of them, or maybe two of them, were north of I five eighty, and one of them was actually east of the Aqueduct. I am concerned about extending the UGB for industrial development. Why spend the money for an EIR when residents have not voted on moving the UGB? Why not have an agreement to study on how to live, work, and grow within our existing UGB? Instead of having a, a study involving moving the UGB, which requires a vote by the Livermore voters. Many people enjoy much of our downtown development. They also enjoy the land, the cattle, and the vineyards that surround Livermore. This is what makes Livermore unique and pleasant. In the past, polls have shown overwhelming support for protecting our UGB. I think that this agenda item should be given more thought by the city council about our agricultural land and living within our existing UGB. Thank you.
The next speaker is on Zoom. The next speaker is Doug Mann, followed by Donna Caban, followed by Carl Wenti. Doug Mann, please unmute yourself and state which item you're speaking to.
Five point three. By virtue of the fact that five point three even made it to an agenda, the likelihood is fading that we can find anyone left on the council majority or staff that can claim to be dedicated to the principle of environmental protection. This item is part of a strategic effort to break Livermore's urban growth boundary. The residents of Livermore fought hard for our UGB, and this attempt to expand the size of the city by over a thousand acres, ten percent, will fail. The last time this sort of thing was tried, it was Warehouser with their thousand-acre unwelcome project. We handily chased them away, seventy-two percent to twenty-eight percent. You can expect a similar outcome if this advances as far as the ballot box. A third of a million dollars will be committed tonight to a company we know very little about. This is only a small portion of the cost to be paid toward this counterproductive, counterproductive development scheme. Inestimable sums will follow, only to be wasted. Instead, you should apply any excess money you have toward our thirty million dollar annual asset maintenance deficit. That time bomb is still ticking, and Livermore residents will expect you to find a solution without raising taxes. It will only get worse the longer you ignore it. And to Councilmember Carling's reflection about sneaking around, your staff did sneak around. Was there an RFQ? Was there a competitive bid for this EIR business? We haven't seen it. I don't see it in the staff report. This was dropped on us. We knew nothing about an environmental impact report. Uh, this amount of money to be spent on uh, something prior to even a UGB vote. This is wasteful. Thank you.
The next speaker is Donna Caban, followed by Carl Wenti, followed by Jonna Thompson. Donna Caban, please unmute yourself and state which item you're speaking to.
Point three. I urge the city council to reconsider spending over three hundred thousand dollars on an environmental report for the East Greenville area. This area is outside of Livermore's UGB. Industrial development could and should occur first within current city limits. Why not use the money to help develop the former Nob Hill Center? Additionally, the three hundred thousand could be used to develop other industrial areas within city limits or spend the money on maintenance or climate change issues. Environmental impact reports are expensive. This is just the tip of the iceberg. Even if you obtain information, it would still need to go to the voters, which would be an additional expense. The city has many pressing, urgent needs. Let's not waste over three hundred thousand dollars to study an area that will likely not be developed for years to come. These are lean financial times. We do not have the luxury to spend this kind of money for the beginning stages of an environmental report. The report will cost much more than three hundred thousand dollars. Please use the money wisely. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carl Wenti, followed by Jonna Thompson. Carl Wenti, please unmute yourself and identify which item you're speaking to.
Hi, this is Carl Wenti, uh, speaking to the consent calendar. I suppose five point three. I want to say thank you to uh, the city council. I want to say thank you to the people working on behalf of the city of Livermore. And I encourage the, this will be used as an educational process as it relates to the general plan updates. For every state to be ratified in, all the land math must be covered by counties. Those counties must have, general municipalities, cities must update their general plans every twenty to thirty years. Pretty nebulous to have a decade on that, but it takes a long, little while. There's environmental justice, there's social justice, there's RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, uh, there's agricultural plans, there's LAFCO getting involved, looking at sphere of influence and the likes. And so as part of the process, and I have been born witness to the process in the same way, because there's nothing in good in life as spending time with my soon-to-be three-year-old. But at the same time, um, how the sausage is made within our stacked constitutional structure and system, there's a general plan update for the city of Livermore. There's a general plan committee that sits and talks and discusses the areas. I think it was a pretty good, diverse group of people that stepped in and looked to serve. And as I understand, they look at the Valley Link uh, area, where's uh, uh, Valley Link, H Train, and Bart, or the, you know, the artist formerly known as Bart, where's that coming through? Downtown, downtown specific plan. Um, there is Vasco Research Drive, and there's just other, and then east of Greenville. And there were areas that they wanted to look at. But this is not blamed on any city council sniffing anything under. So watch the beautiful process of this usual experiment of the worst form of government that's ever been. Um, I mean, except we have the worst form of government, except for every other form there's ever been, right? I mean, it's an experiment as it goes, but show up and watch how that process worked, and the process worked, and it came to this conclusion. So now people are saying, oh, my God, the sky is falling across that. I'm not too big a dog in the sky, but fundamentally, like, I have a dog in the fight of the general plan update. plan update process working, of the people, by the people, for the people, in a transparent process of open government. And I believe that we have that. So when people accuse the city council, city staff or otherwise, of not doing that, I don't think they're paying really close attention, they're not being honest with themselves, or maybe they're not being honest with the community in what they're saying. But at the end of the day, show up, let's all take part in the government, let's all watch how this works, and make sure our voices are heard. So, thank you, city council. Thank you, city manager. Thank you, city attorney. Thank you, all the great staff, those who pull on bulletproof vests to go to work, keep us safe. I salute you. Namaste. Here's to good, open government.
The last speaker is, oh, excuse me, there's one more after that. Jonna Thompson, followed by Michael Ferrucci. Jonna Thompson, please unmute yourself and state which item you're speaking to.
5.3. Exhibit A describes the parcels being studied as being mostly south of I-580 and west of the Aqueduct. This implies that some of the parcels are not south of I-580 and west of the Aqueduct. At your last meeting, two parcels north of I-580 and one parcel south of I-580 and east of the Aqueduct, which are for sale, were being considered for acquisition. What is the purpose for which these parcels are being considered for acquisition? Are these the parcels in Exhibit A that are not south of I-580 and west of the Aqueduct that Rincon will be evaluating in the EIR? Why is Livermore interested in acquiring these parcels? And is the city contemplating moving the urban growth boundary farther east than the Aqueduct? If so, why and how far? Thank you.
The next speaker is Michael Ferrucci. Michael Ferrucci, please unmute yourself and state which item you're speaking to.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes.
Oh, good. Michael Ferrucci, speaking 5.3. I've been a resident of Livermore for more than 40 years, and when the population was a little bit more than 50,000 people. I've seen many changes in our community, both good and bad, with respect to decisions made by our planning department, as well as citizen advocates. As many of you know, I've been involved in many campaigns to protect the character, charm of Livermore's neighborhoods, promotion of businesses, and the protection of our environment, probably the most my involvement is dedicated to. I'm proud of my involvement in the efforts to promote the initiative that created Livermore's UGB. Thousands of signatures, voters wanted the same thing, an urban growth boundary. I personally feel that it would be a failure of our efforts, and I ask you not to spend over $300,000 until you get a real assessment of the support of Livermore residents. I tell people that I talk to that you need to be involved in what's going on in city decisions. The city council meets every two weeks, and it only takes three of our council members to make decisions that affect the lives of everyone here in Livermore. They need to know what's going on. So spending $300,000 to me is not a good idea right now. I want to urge you to not vote tonight on an EIR to evaluate these properties. You would not be representing our community. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, very good. With that, I'm going to close the public comment period. Thank you all for your comments, and I'll bring it back to the council vice mayor kick. You were reaching there for the, okay, so take a break. All right. Anybody else? Councilmember Branding.
Yeah. So I want to thank everyone who just commented on this item. Clearly, there's a lot of questions around it. And to be frank, I think that's why this is an important investment for our city. So I actually wrote a lot of things down. I was going to go through them, but I particularly want to thank Ms. Silva for bringing up the very specific reasons why this is important. There was questions around what boundaries we'd be voting on. We know that elections cost money. If we went for an initial vote, asking if you'd like to move the urban growth boundary, and then a second vote, asking what the boundaries actually were, we'd be spending quite a bit of funds for that. Being able to ask the question now of what should the boundary be? There were questions about what should we use the land for? Was it open space? Do we want to preserve a green belt around our city to prevent any future growth? Regardless of what entity wants to grow, that could be an option. Do we want to have agricultural uses for that space? That could be an option. Do we want industrial uses? That could be an option. But what I've been hearing from every commenter, both for and against this, was we have questions. We don't understand what's happening. And so this idea that, you know, some people suggested that we vote first, what are we voting on? What's the question we pose to the voters? And so that's my counter to all of this, is I don't know what we would ask. I don't know what the ballot language would be. And without this, without us first studying, we don't know the question. We don't know the boundaries. We don't know the uses. We don't have the answers to the questions you are all asking. I know it's an investment of funds from the city, but this is the process. This is how we get the public information to everyone. This is how we make sure everyone's informed. And then it will be a vote. It is possible that we'll look at it, and council, the general plan advisory committee, the planning commission, all of your representatives will look at it and go, this just doesn't make sense. We might look at it and say, we think this makes sense. Like, if we agree that this looks like something that is sensible, then we ask the question. But we need to know what that question is. And so I really think it's important we do this. I hope everyone on council will support us doing the CIR. Because without this EIR, there isn't a question to ask.
Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, thank you. I think I already said, I thought the EIR was important, because I think the more information we give the public, the better. I just want to appreciate the folks that spoke to us tonight, and I want to speak to a couple of specific things. I think we all need to recall that the general plan advisory committee is the folks that suggested we consider this, and they are people made up of this community. And so you all, whoever spoke against this, had an opportunity of being on GPAC. And if you're so concerned about it, you might have considered volunteering for that and spending your time there and trying to influence whether or not we look at this property or not. There was another comment about, very little about Rincon. Well, that's the process. This is where you learned about it, and we have employed Rincon in the past. They were the consultants that we hired when we put together the Climate Action Plan. I don't know whether we've hired them for other activities or not. I see Mr. Spence is nodding his head. So this is not the first contract we've had with Rincon, and frankly, they've done an excellent job for us in this particular area. So we do know about Rincon, and the process is for you to hear about it tonight in open session. I get it back again. I think that this comment about encouraging people to be part of the discussion, I agree with, and I appreciate the people bringing their thoughts about this process tonight. But I'll, again, this was a suggestion brought by cadre of your fellow citizens out there, fellow residents, to think, consider this. And I would also keep in mind that right now, the county is responsible for that area. And right now, they kind of have carte blanche about what they do there. We, the city of Livermore, don't have any control over that property. And I think that's in part why the general plan advisory committee was interested in considering that, is that would give us more control, let us as a community decide what goes there, and not have the county dictate what goes on in that property. So I'm very much in support of this, again, as another piece of information for the public to consider when it does go before the voters on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carling. Vice Mayor Kick.
This is on consent. I'm just going to say something, and you tell me if that's true, what I'm about to say. This is on consent, simply because it goes over your spending authority. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we gave direction for this item on April 10, 2023. I believe that's when I said we shouldn't make decisions based on information that I would have had as a 13-year-old, because that's how long it's been since we got information. And so we decided on multiple areas to study, not just Greenville. Is that correct?
That is correct, Vice Mayor. The council gave us direction to study east of Greenville as an additional area for the general plan update at that meeting.
Fantastic. So the policy direction has been made in April. It's on consent, which are generally just considered items for us to then look back at to make sure that that is what we said we wanted you to do. Yep, you're doing what we said. It's above the spending authority, so thanks for bringing it to us again. I find it disingenuous to say, I'm bringing something up for discussion to put your feelers up when, and make it about $300,000 being too much money, when similar public commenters have participated in lawsuits that have spent city money, a lot more city money than $300,000. So I would just appreciate disagreement is fine. I just would appreciate if the disagreement was honest. I really don't think it's because of $300,000. I think it's because you're mad about the direction that we gave. And I think that's okay. You can be mad about the direction that was given, but this is not a discussion on direction. The direction was decided. We are now doing a check and balance because it is over a spending authority. So thank you to staff for putting this together. Thank you for getting us the information so we could make the decision to give the direction. This whole conversation right now feels like an attack on staff and a waste of time. Again, I'm going to get in trouble for defending staff, apparently, but I would appreciate if we did a better job of acting professionally towards them up here.
As Rubri Entos.
It's not attacking staff, period. It's just, I want the public to know what's going on. And I don't, it doesn't matter how you're going to approach it, you can put emails out, everything. People got to know. I want them to understand what's coming up, and it might be good. Staff, you are given a task, and you do the job that we want you to do, and you do it well. So there's no attack on staff by me, for sure. And I appreciate your work, and I appreciate the talent that we have, and I see you being hired every day. So I disagree at times, and it's okay to disagree, and I will be making good trouble.
Okay. First off, let me just ask staff a quick question here. There's a question about other post-employment benefits, OPEB. And I remember a few years ago, the city had over $100 million in unfunded OPEB liability. And that, most of that is medical, it's after retirement medical. So these are benefits that are paid by the city after people have retired. So would you just please expand on that, Madam City Manager?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the opportunity, Mayor. We also noticed that we apparently need to do a better job in explaining those terms in our staff reports, but you're absolutely right.
It's not as bad as water chemistry, I guarantee.
But we can do better. In this particular case, OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, which in the case of the city of Livermore, refers to the old, now discontinued retiree medical benefit. So the city used to have a benefit in place that provided, that paid for medical benefits of retired city employees. That benefit has discontinued, however, the liability that is associated with that benefit for the employees who were eligible in the past is still in the books, and we have been making significant progress in reducing that liability.
We've reduced that by over $60 million since we first grappled with this, when Councilmember Warner was on the council, we tackled this with you as well. We reduced it over $60 million. So there's been a tremendous effort on that.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so those, but we're paying this down, and that's the, but these are other post-employment benefits. We've renegotiated that, so we're gradually paying all of this off, so we're getting a handle on it.
We closed the system, so we're not allowing any additional employees to be eligible for those benefits. This has been happening for a few years now. So the system is closed. The liability is not set in stone, but pretty much set in stone, and the funding level of that plan has been increased significantly due to the efforts of the city council to fund it.
Thank you. Okay, there's a lot of comments tonight. Somebody mentioned, well, what's the lab doing? S&amp;D is working on some tremendous biofuels opportunities out there. Councilmember Carling was the director for the combustion research facility, some tremendous work on, there is not a car in the United States on the road today built in the last 30 years that doesn't have technology that came out of the combustion research facility. So it's remarkable work out there. So what's the lab doing? The biofuels, we just, back in December, achieved fusion ignition, the first laboratory in the world to accomplish that. So we're really doing some tremendous work here in Livermore. We're really leading the industry. We had a meeting today at Gilly Bus about hydrogen fuel cell buses. So tremendous efforts are being made just to that purpose. When the South Livermore Valley Area Plan was created, the idea was that there would be additional infusions of money to acquire additional agricultural lands. That never happened. Ruby Hill provided one infusion of money, and then that was it. Tri Valley Conservancy was created, but there haven't been any additional funds to acquire additional easements in perpetuity. So that's one of the things that this EIR could look at, is what are the opportunities to bring in additional funding for open space and for agriculture and for parks? Councilmember Bari Entos said, I want the public to know what's going on. And what I find astonishing is why so many people that we heard from tonight are afraid. They're afraid of getting additional information. They're afraid of providing information to the voters. Are you afraid that maybe that information may show you to be incorrect? I mean, I worked on the campaign to stop Livermore Valley Trails. It was Livermore Valley Trails that on December 5, 2004, I walked into the kitchen and told my wife, I have to run for the council to protect our urban growth boundary. That's why I ran, was to protect our urban growth boundary. So I know all about this. I've lived and breathed this. So one of the speakers said, well, why move the urban growth boundary and how far? Well, this is what the study is going to tell us. And I was astonished to hear speakers tonight saying, an EIR is too expensive. We shouldn't do it. And yet, this was the same person that said we should fund another EIR on the land under Eden Housing. When we already had an EIR, and the courts upheld that EIR, they wanted another EIR, and they spent over $1 million in litigation fighting Eden Housing. And they're afraid of having an environmental impact report that is going to give the voters clear information to see what should we do with the lands east of Greenville Road. As a chemist, I've always appreciated more information. The more information I get, the better. And here on the council, I always appreciate the great information that I get from staff, and I always tell them, their job is to get me the information that I need to make a good decision. Because that's what we're doing up here, is we're making the good decisions. So to Councilmember Bari Entos' paper, I want the public to know what's going on. That's exactly what we're doing here. We're getting the information. We're getting the information to the the community, to the voters. As uh as as Councilmember Carling pointed out, everybody had an opportunity to be on the general plan advisory committee. I was on the general plan advisory committee until I got bumped off. Uh, sorry, got caught a promotion there. Um, but nobody spoke tonight, even applied to be on the general plan advisory committee. So this is an opportunity. This is a very, very public process. And I'm astonished that people are afraid of information. This is, this is very transparent. We're we're going out to get this information to see if this is a good idea. Right now, on Loop and Road, there's an automobile junkyard. People talk about, oh, we need to keep these pristine agricultural lands open. There's a junkyard. There's over 50 cars out there dripping oil onto the grasslands. That's because it's county land. The city has no control over that. But that's not agriculture. How can we best use and protect and expand the best uses of these lands? That's what an EIR is going to tell us. That's going to give information to the voters so that they can make an informed decision. That's what we want. I've had my say. Thank you very much. Um, with that, I'm uh going to bring it back to the council. I'm going to ask for an accommodation uh from the uh from the council. Uh, I am going to abstain, I'm going to recuse myself from 5.5. Not because I believe that there is a uh a conflict of interest, but in order to ensure that there is no perceived conflict of interest, uh, I have uh known the the owner of Grade Tech for a number of years. Uh, and he supported my campaign in 2018. Uh, so in the uh abundance of caution, I would recuse myself from 5.5. Uh, and would ask that if, is the direction of the council that we get a a motion for uh 5.1 to 5.4 and then 5.6 to 5.20?
I'll move that we um we move staff recommendation for 5.1 to 5.4 and then 5.6 to 5.20?
20.
20?
Yeah.
Four zero twenty. Um, uh, that's the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, move by Vice Mayor Kik. Uh, is the city clerk clear on the motion? Okay, and uh seconded by Councilmember Carling. Uh, roll call, please.
Can I, I just want to make one comment um about I think it's 5.20. Um, wait, which one is uh? It's not Tuesday. Sorry, I got the wrong one.
Oh, and
Which one is the uh TV uh TV 30? Well, yes, 512. I just wanted to make a comment about 12, 512. I'm glad uh that we're um signing a contract with them. I I'm not sure exactly how to convey the quality of their broadcasts to homes. I've gotten some feedback that the, that the sound quality on their broadcasts are not very good. So I don't, I don't begrudge having the contract. I'd just like to be able to get them some information that the sound quality on their broadcast is just not very good. So that was my comment.
Uh, and since I've got this open again, uh, if I just have an explanation on uh 5.15, the Real Time Awareness Center. I think that's important for the community to understand some of the uh the work that we are doing in that space. Oh, the chief is here. Terrific. Would you be so kind, uh, Chief Young?
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeremy Young. I'm the police chief in Livermore and the Real Time Awareness Center uh was a great investment in public safety. I'd like to thank you all for that. Uh, it basically provides crime analysts who are working uh in the building to provide the real-time information to first responders as they're responding to uh emergencies, whether it be fire or police or even public works in the event of a natural disaster, to provide them situational awareness and it makes our community safer and our first responders safer as well. It's also our department operations center in the event of a natural disaster and emergency. So we can operate out of that building in coordination with the city's EOC.
Great. Thank you very much. I was really excited to see that on the agenda. I just want to make sure that it didn't get buried because I think that's very important to to demonstrate to the community our commitment, ongoing commitment to uh to public safety. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, so anybody else? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bariantos?
Your amendment is on 5.1, 2, 3, and 4.
And then 5.6, 5.20.
So I'm voting no because of 5.3.
Councilmember Browning?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kik?
Hi.
Mayor Marchand?
Hi.
And uh, the record showed that Councilmember Bariantos voted no on 5.3. Okay, so with that, uh, let me make sure this is right with the city attorney. Uh, so I'm going to be recusing myself on 5. uh 5.5. So uh, however, I will ask for a motion and a second on 5.5. Very nice. Very kind. Thank you.
Uh, I will make a motion for staff recommendation on 5.5.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please? Councilmember Bariantos?
Yes.
Councilmember Browning?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kik?
Hi.
Mayor Marchand, he recuses himself.
I recuse myself. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Uh, let's see, last. I believe now we've gone to uh uh video reports, matters initiated. Councilmember Bariantos, we'll start on your side this time.
I couldn't find the link, so I gotta do it orally. I went to the ribbon cutting for the grocery outlet. It was the third set of owners that I've known there and and uh I was there with the mayor, a nice and, a nice little celebration out there. And of course, I went to my EVC meeting in Oakland and we're adding a later to the mix now. So it's gonna be Tracy, Stockton and uh Lethrop and the CPCs uh kind of did 180 on blocking off EVC from uh Stockton. So now they're gonna push it. And I did ask if it's gonna impact our uh uh renewal 100 and they said, no, not one bit. It'll, it'll go forward the way we want it. And then I went to the thing Saturday, 103 degrees. I mean, I didn't see anybody there unless you're in costume. That was Comic Con. And I think it went pretty good for being 103 degrees out there and a lot of kids came by. They enjoyed the face painting and uh meeting uh Iron Man. He came to uh, those people suffered. They put those suits on. I saw them afterward. They're just dripping sweat when they walked by me. But it's, it was a good turnout for being a quick put together and they're thinking about next year, not during this time of the year.
Okay, that is, all right. Uh, Councilmember Browning?
Thank you. Um, so I have a few things to report out, but I was out of town actually the last week or so. Uh, normally I wouldn't talk about my vacations, but I want to bring up one thing from it, which is I did get the pleasure of visiting Bend, which is a city that is a lot of parallels with Livermore. It's very similar population, uh relatively similar demographics. There's some, some changes there. Uh, and I just think one of the things for anyone who has an opportunity, I think if you get a chance, I would recommend you check out Bend because it does give an example of what Livermore might look at like if we were able to fully flesh out our tourism industry. We're still kind of growing up in that world right now. And Bend had a a much more established, you know, hotel scene, tourism scene there. And I think we could take several lessons from that. Uh, it was very impressive. It was a very nice city and I see a lot of ideas that we could take from there and I'd be happy to chat with staff anytime about that. Additionally, uh, I went to the Chamber Mixer at the Lawrence Livermore Foundation, uh, saw some of the faces in the audience there, uh, many people there. It was very cool. They have a um newer building that they're doing a lot of their foundation work out of. Uh, if you get a chance, it is open to the public, uh, sometimes. Check it out. Uh, I was also able to see Smart 104 is the sheet metal union's training center and take a tour of that, which is also in our backyard. Uh, in pretty close to the lab as well. It was great seeing students uh who were learning about the apprenticeship programs and all they offer there. And then I came directly here from TV NPAs, the Tri Valley Nonprofit Alliance's check awarding ceremony, where they were giving out $30,000 of funds to various nonprofits that are really helping our community out uh from smaller grants to bigger ones, uh, but really quite a variety of different uh nonprofits that are doing a lot of great work in the community and getting to hear from all the cool things they're doing. So if you have a chance in the future, that is another event that I recommend people attend if possible to just see kind of the breadth of different nonprofits that are spending their time, their money, their effort to make sure that the quality of life in Livermore is as great as it can possibly be. Thank you.
Councilmember Carling?
Bend has a ski resort. We don't.
The weather's very different.
Um, just a couple of things. I um, I think the last time I was here, I mentioned uh Spark and what the show they were putting on was Silent Sky. Uh, also, my wife and I had the pleasure of seeing Much Ado About Nothing uh at Spark. And I will tell you, it was a heck of a lot warmer seeing that than going to see Silent Sky the other time. I think Vice, Vice Mayor would agree. Anyway, it's uh still uh running uh at um Darcy Canyon Vineyards uh through uh August 6th. So if you have a chance, it's a terrific play and uh the acting is just fabulous. So if you have a chance, uh, take it in. Um, several of us were at the uh Access Health uh quote groundbreaking. It's a building on Second Street that Access has bought. And I think it's 8,600, uh, something like that, square feet, plus and minus two-story building on Second Street. And they're combining medical, dental, and mental health all in one location for people that need that kind of service. And uh I think it's really gonna be a terrific addition to the community and provide in some sense, one-stop shopping for folks in need. And um I think they'll have a ribbon cutting, I don't know, sometime early next year or something like that. But uh they need to convert, I think, the building into the uh offices and the the clinics that they need. And like um my colleague, uh, Councilmember Browning, I was also at TV MPA today um acknowledging some of the great nonprofits in uh in not only our, in Livermore, but in the Tri Valley. They do try to uh accommodate uh nonprofits throughout the Tri Valley and electeds were there from each of the five cities to celebrate the accomplishments of of those nonprofits and the award, the grant awards that were provided today. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Kik?
Um, I have no official meetings to uh report, but I finally made it to the compost pickup. So that was pretty awesome. Stop Waste um is running that out of um Fertile Groundworks. And remember to do the survey every time. So Stop Waste keeps giving us free compost. Fun fact, dirt is expensive. This compost is free. Um, I also made it to Much Ado About Nothing, fantastic as always, and uh spent Saturday at Comic Con with my children where we got to meet the real R2D2. So if anybody asks, yes, it was the real R2D2 in Livermore this weekend. Um, and uh there were quite a few local artists there. It was nice talking to all the artists and realizing how many people um were either currently living in Livermore or grew up in Livermore and came to town uh for this event to share their art and uh their comics. And we left um with a lot of comics uh and um that it was uh, it was a great event. So um great job as always to um the bank head for the events they put on. And that's all I got. Oh, that's not true. This is also matters initiated time. Um, sorry. Uh, there uh was a complaint from a a resident about our ADU ordinance um and some uh misunderstanding and confusion about if ADUs are allowed to be used as Airbnbs. I know there's already been conversation with staff. I was just hoping you could get back to us um with some more information about this problem um and um uh be it a memo or a uh an estimate of when we might learn more. Uh, that would be, that would be great.
We are uh working with that resident and investigating options and will provide you with some information on that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, all right, good. Uh, okay, I went to a number of the uh events that you have already heard about. Uh, also went to uh uh the opening of the the Buyer's Eye Institute, which is a part of Stanford Healthcare. Uh, and it really is, this is world-class care that we were having uh come to Livermore. So it's very, very exciting. Uh, the uh great program at with Lawrence Livermore Foundation, there's great works being done there. Uh, also, uh, the uh work that they're doing on ALS is quite remarkable with uh, so the supercomputing capacity. Uh, went to the groundbreaking at Access Healthcare and the uh there was, I had a meeting with the Housing Base. It's a uh group that develops metrics uh around uh affordable housing and homelessness. Very interesting. And the interesting thing was that they were really interested about a lot of the great things that we were doing here in Livermore. And he was very excited to see some of the initiatives that we had had undertaken. Uh, and this morning we were out at Gilleg Bus. Uh, Gilleg Bus is really ramping up this uh this green space. We're talking about uh the electric buses and also hydrogen fuel cells. So they're really gonna be a leader uh in uh in that, in that space in the next couple of years. So uh with that, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, this has been a very, very difficult week and uh Livermore and the whole Tri Valley lost a very dear friend, uh, and I did as well. Charles F. Crowher, uh, who I affectionately refer to as uh Charles the Elder, uh, passed away uh last week at the age of 91. Uh, and those, you may, you probably saw him at the farmer's market. He was the one that, he was the face behind Olivina Weiner, Olivina Olive Oil. Uh, they tended some of the oldest uh olive orchards uh in the region. Uh, but he, he really was hearkened back to an earlier age. He uh, he worked at his grandfather's uh bakery, which was the first French bakery uh in Livermore. It was on uh North L Street. But uh he really embraced the agricultural heritage that we had in this community. And uh, as I said, hearken back to that uh earlier, gentler time. And uh, as I said, he he passed away, but and he would be greatly missed. Uh, he was a remarkable individual. I've known him uh since my zone seven days, so going way back. Uh, but it was an honor and a privilege to to know him. Uh, and I will adjourn uh the meeting in his honor and his memory. Charles Crowher.